Nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is the consent agenda, approved in minutes from August 5th. Approved temporary one to four day liquor license for High Forest Old Settlers Association. Accept the climate smart food systems regional food coordination grant. Award contract for Oxbow Park Caretaker's Home. Approve amended contract for C twenty-four dash oh one County State Aid Highway One. Accept the grant for the Victims of Crime Act to fund one victim witness full-time staff begin in October twenty-first through September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. Accept the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And lastly, set county truth and taxation dates for the two thousand and twenty-six budget.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Next up, discussion decision items. Authorized issuance and sale of general obligation bonds series two thousand and twenty-five A, Fredo.
Good evening Commissioners, Wilfredo Roman-Catala Olmsted County Chief Financial Officer. And I know I handed out some financial plan for you. And I'll try to be as brief as I can and then allow you if you have any questions. Let's start here, you know, back in January of two thousand, this January, January seventh of two thousand and twenty-five, we approved the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-nine CIP, which is the capital improvement plan. And it's basically our community roadmap of projects, big projects, things like fixing roads, upgrading parks, building new facilities, or replacing important equipment. That's basically what it is. And that's kind of, in a way, starts our journey before we decide to issue bonds, right? We explore what different avenues we have to fund different projects, different equipment and things like that. And then eventually, we come to the realization that some of it needs to be funded through a financing mechanism as debt by issuing bonds. So what brings us tonight together is the set sale, which is basically a resolution where you formally authorizing us to enter into a competitive sale process that will take place on September sixteenth, that you'll see in a few clicks here later. After that, we have on August twenty-seventh, we'll have a bond rating from one of the rating agencies. And basically what it is, is somebody assessing our credit worthiness, you know, are we able to pay back the amount of money that we're borrowing? And if we can do that very successfully, we get rewarded by lowest interest cost and what they call a triple A rating. Olmsted County is one of the very few counties in the nation, there's only three percent of us that have a three, a triple A rating. Only three percent of nationwide counties have such a high rating. So then we move on to actually on September sixteenth, where we're going to actually offer in a public sale in a competitive bidding process, our municipal advisor, Northland Securities is helping us with this process, so is is the our legal counsel, Dorsey and Whitney. So we can make sure we're following rules and following the specific statutes and laws related to the sale. And we have chosen this process because it will reward us with hopefully the best lowest possible interest cost at the time when the bonds are sold versus going into a private negotiation with one particular investor. And finally, in this timeline, we will have a closure of the bonds, which is basically when the money is shifting hands, right? Those, those are purchasing our bonds, are sending us the money. And it takes between the time of the sale to the time of the closure, three to four weeks. There's a lot of administrative work, legal processes and financial mechanisms that need to be finely tuned before we get the money in our coffers, if you will. I'm gonna stop here just in case there's any questions so far about the timeline. Okay, wonderful. So then, quick overview, you know, what is the purpose of these bonds? Well, like I mentioned before, it's all related to capital. We have a significant portion of these dollars will go to the materials recovery facility. About fifteen point two million of the sale will go towards that. And the balance of about six point three million will go to other equipment building needs and things of that nature unrelated to the waste energy facility for general purpose use in the county. As you can see here, what is the security to, against these bonds? Well, obviously, those are solid waste related, are the proceeds of the, of the waste energy facility and those services are what secure the bonds. And the rest will be secured by property taxes. These bonds are general obligation bonds, meaning that we are going to be giving the certainty of those bond, the people, the investors buying the bonds, that even if the waste energy facility is not able, or the material recovery facility is not able to pay those, we will tax our community to be able to do that. We don't anticipate that will be the case, that hasn't been the case ever, but that's one of the assurances we gave those bondholders, and that's why we get favorable ratings as well. And as you can see here, the table below, those are the paramounts, the fifteen point two million is for solid waste over twenty years. And the rest is something that we have done in the past and will continue to do is matching in a way, the, the, the estimated useful life of the assets we're financing with the amount of time that we take to pay those bonds. So for example, we have eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for CIP five years, meaning that those are equipment that we believe have five years of estimated useful life, and we will pay that principal within the first five years. We will not allow that principal to elongate itself through twenty years, that'll be kind of irresponsible in our part. So even though most likely many of the assets we will be paying in five years have an estimated useful life a little bit higher than that, because vehicle may have seven years versus five, we have chosen to amortize the principal over five years. Okay. Then, as you can see here, the term, these bonds will mature, the final maturity will be in year two thousand and forty-six, but we'll have the option to prepay depending on how favorable the economics are by year two thousand and thirty-four. With the two thousand and twenty-three bonds will be the ones that we can, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-three, that we can prepaid if that becomes available to us in the future. And then the structure, like I mentioned before, the bonds have been structured to be annually, the level annual debt service, which ranges between five to twenty years. And as I explained before, we try to match the best we can, the principal payback period with the estimated useful life of the assets. And finally, the tax status, these bonds will be tax exempt based on IRS rules, which means they can only be used for public purpose things, not for any private purpose activities. And also means that because the bond buyers, these are taxes and the bond buyers will receive tax exemption from the IRS, they won't be able to, they don't need to pay federal taxes on it, meaning that then we'll get better ratings on the sale of the, of the bonds as well. So I'm gonna stop here again, just in case there's any questions or comments before I conclude. Hearing none. And then basically what we're asking you is to approve the resolution to allow us the opportunity to sell these bonds in September sixteenth.
Greg?
Correct, they are our municipal advisor. Yeah, they're working in the market to make sure that people know that we're selling these bonds, so we hopefully will get the highest amount of bidders.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Any more questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm trying to understand with respect to the solid waste facility and the MRF, obviously, the price tag on that is a lot more than, we have ten million dollars with the state money and now we're augmenting that apparently with fifteen point two, and so that, as I understand, this fifty-two million dollar project, we're, you know, we're at about half the money we need to do it. How did we decide on fifteen point two as opposed to bonding for what we really need to do to complete the project?
Yeah, so if you recall, we had the conversation that is the board's desire to go and try to attempt to ask for additional funding from the state.
Okay.
So that's the reason for it. So eventually, we're not successful in that request, we will be coming back next year to finalize the finance plan and adding or selling additional bonds in order to make it happen.
So Mr. Chair, just to follow up on that, so we'll know the answer to that by, by, by May of next year. Is it possible then, if we want to move this forward, that we would have the opportunity to pursue additional bonding at that point, to make up that difference if they so choose?
You mean in bonding, asking the state for bonding dollars?
Well, we'll do that anyway, but, you know, we may or may not be successful.
Correct, so then what will happen is in the next, not this fall, the upcoming fall in two thousand and twenty-six, we'll be going the same process and asking you, now we need to issue these many dollars to finance the last part of the project.
Yeah, my question, Mr. Chair, is that we'll, we'll know, we'll know the outcome by the end of May of this next, two thousand and twenty-six. If, if we are not successful and if we want to proceed, can we not then just proceed, say in June of next year to pursue this, or is this, is this on some kind of a schedule?
Yeah, so it's up to us when we sell bonds.
Right, yeah.
Normally, we have chosen to sell the bonds in the fall, but that's it, that's our personal choice.
Sure, so we could execute earlier?
Earlier, yeah.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Sure. Any more questions? Okay, hearing that, I'm looking for a motion. It's outwinded, yep.
Second?
Okay, we have motion to second, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, informational items, Minnesota Inter County Association, MICA, two thousand and twenty-five annual county visit. Hello?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name is Nathan Jesson, I'm the Executive Director at the Minnesota Inter County Association. So I just first wanted to start off by talking about what MICA is, so we're a voluntary group of seventeen counties from across the state, both metro and outside the metro, that work on the issues that really, not on individual specific issues per county, but the issues that affect all counties. We try to take an analytical approach to our work, too. I'm also new to the job, I started in January, prior to coming to MICA, I worked at the League of Minnesota Cities. We've got a team here of lobbyists who'll introduce themselves as we go along here. So what we do is we really just try to establish connections for counties at the Capitol, sometimes that's us in committee, we're able to be in committee every day, but we're at our most effective when we can bring your stories or sometimes you to the Capitol and make sure that we're making the, making the problems and issues we're bringing as relatable to legislators as possible, and that's by really highlighting local stories. We also provide weekly updates from the Capitol, we provide an end of session report, as well as policy committee work that happens throughout the year. We also do property tax comparisons, levy data and economic forecast breakdowns, so if you're ever curious about any of those things as they come up, just please don't hesitate to reach out to me for more information on them. And speaking of that, I did just want to start with a little bit of a picture of Olmsted County and how it compares to the state when it comes to your share of property tax and what you're taxing. So this, these are the major property types that get taxed and the percentage that Olmsted, like the percentage of the pie that's made up by them in Olmsted compared to the state, I've also showed the data for two thousand and twenty in Olmsted in Minnesota and compared it to two thousand and twenty-five for both of them. And so what you'll see here is that Olmsted is essentially following a statewide trend of residential values increasing as a percentage of the overall pie, and commercial and industrial values as a percentage of the overall pie decreasing. That's not to say that commercial industrial valuations are decreasing overall, just the percentage of the pie that they're paying. And notably in two thousand and twenty, for assessment year two thousand and twenty-five in Olmsted in particular, commercial and industrial valuations in Olmsted are increasing significantly. But that just kind of gives you an idea of like what you're taxing when you're putting together your levy and where it's going and where shifts happen amongst property taxes when the legislature makes changes. And if you ever have any questions as I'm going along here, don't be afraid, just speak up and let me know, or any of the people that follow me. So I did want to talk a little bit about what happened at the Capitol this year in the tax realm. So the dynamics of the Capitol, which you all know, we are facing a six billion dollar structural deficit. So in taxes, that resulted in a hundred and eighteen million dollar cut target this biennium and a hundred and ninety million the biennium. When you're talking about a cut target in taxes, you're talking about either taxes going up or aid payments to local governments, many of which go to counties going down, right? So this is something that immediately put us on the defensive here. And one of the changes that was made was that in two thousand and twenty-three, when the legislature decided to legalize cannabis, they set aside twenty percent of the gross receipts tax revenue to go out to local governments, half of that to cities, half of that to counties. The governor, House and Senate all proposed repealing this aid. I think part of it is that this money hadn't started coming in yet, so unlike other areas where we were saying, hey, if you repeal this, you're gonna be increasing property taxes, it was a little bit more difficult to make that argument on the cannabis aid. The other aid changes, these are a little bit less significant to Olmsted County, but aquatic invasive species cut in half starting in two thousand and twenty-seven. Pilt was held constant, Olmsted not a huge recipient of pilt, but the governor had proposed reducing it by one-third. I did want to talk about CPA a little bit here, Olmsted's gonna get a modest increase, that's not because the appropriation increased at the Capitol, it's just a little bit redistribution every year. Olmsted does receive slightly above average county program aid on a per capita basis. It's about fifty-nine dollars statewide, sixty-four dollars per capita in Olmsted County. And Olmsted's CPA is going up again in two thousand and twenty-six, just because you're on both the need side, which is measured by percentage of families on SNAP or percentage of population sixty-five or over, as well as the tax base side. So that's kind of what happened in the tax realm this year at the legislature. One thing that we've been working on for a long time, weren't able to make headway on was the construction materials sales tax refund. I've had conversations with Commissioner Senjem about this before, on counties having to pay sales tax when they're on the billing materials. We are working with the Department of Revenue to see if we can come up with a solution that doesn't have an eighty million dollar statewide price tag, because nobody thinks it's a bad idea, but it's seldom anybody's highest priority. So we are working with them on that this interim. It is an ongoing process and project, though, anytime you're talking to a state agency about a big change like that, though. So unless there are questions on that part, I will turn it over to Amber to go over some of the transportation and bonding issues.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name's Amber Vakis, I'm with United Strategies, and this was my first term serving as the Transportation Liaison for MICA at the Capitol, and it's been a pleasure representing you all. And I also must say I'll be enjoying the evening tonight in Rochester, as my parents are constituents of Commissioner Hopkins, so always great to be in town. With regard to the transportation bill, that was kind of an ugly mess to get it done. You had some issues in terms of interpersonal conflicts between the co-chairs on the House, it was hard for them to come together on a bill, which made it even harder than to negotiate with the Senate. So this bill was not done during the regular session, it was one that was done during the special session and was completely negotiated behind closed doors by leadership because the chairs could not get along. The other issue was that it was a tough bill for the committee to reach their target, they had a very high negative general fund target, they had to find reductions of a hundred and fifteen million dollars in the upcoming biennium and a hundred and thirty-three million dollars after that, and that's one-third of the general fund spending in the issue of transportation. The bulk of those cuts fell largely on transit, both greater Minnesota and the metro transit, as well as active transportation. There were some cuts made to roads and bridges, too. If you recall, during the two thousand and twenty-three session, when a big transportation package was passed, the legislature decided to dedicate the revenue from the sales tax on motor vehicle parts to transportation purposes and phase that in over time. Well, with the impending deficit and their budget target, the transportation bill slows that dedication, so the sales tax on auto parts is going to lose eighty-three million dollars in fiscal years twenty-eight, twenty-nine to help keep those monies in the general fund. Fortunately, they were able to offset some of those cuts by increasing the surcharge on electric vehicles, that amount is currently seventy-five dollars, it's going to be as much as two hundred dollars depending on the make and model of your vehicle. So that means that overall, in the next four years, the trunk highway fund is going to be down eighteen point three million dollars, with eight point six million coming from CASA and the twenty-eight, twenty-nine biennium. The one bright spot amongst all these cuts was the fact that they, the committee and the leadership did find some money to put aside for the local government road wetland replacement program, three million in general fund dollars was provided by the transportation committee, which is pretty huge considering that program is overseen by Bowser, which is typically funded in another part of the budget.
Was there any bonding?
Yes, that'll be coming up, too, when I talk about the bonding, yes, so that program did do well in light of all of that. And I don't have it listed on the slide here, but another win for counties was the fact that the legislature decided to provide some monies so that your licensing center can be reimbursed for no fee transactions. For example, if somebody comes in to change their address with their vehicle registration, that's not something that they would pay a fee for, but there will be reimbursement for the state for that, as well as some other transactions where the customers don't pay fees right now. Oh, I've got the clicker myself, don't I? Great. I also wanted to just touch on some of the provisions that weren't included in the final transportation bill. On the first one was one that we wanted to see. Another new program that was instituted in the twenty-three, twenty-four sessions was a program to require the greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled associated with new trunk highway capacity or new interchange projects on state roads to be calculated and then offset. I think everybody agrees that's a very noble intention, but unfortunately, there's no money associated with that program, and there's a lot of questions about how it's going to be implemented. So we were hoping that the delay in the House version would have gone through, but that did not make it. But we continue to have conversations with MinDOT about how this will work and have them presenting actually to our MICA engineers next month. On the other provisions, we are very happy to see that they didn't make it into the final package, these were all provisions that the Senate was pursuing. They wanted to change the state aid design standards, and it would have reduced some of the uniformity we see in terms of our county state aid road standards across the state. They also had language expanding the definition of how trunk highway funds could be spent. Right now, as you know, those monies are dedicated to roads and bridges, this would have expanded the uses to transit, active transportation, greenhouse gas emissions, and some other offices within MinDOT that aren't related to roads and bridges. We had concerns about that just because the resources are so scarce for our road and bridge program now, but that did not make it in the bill. The Senate also had some language mandating speed limits on certain county roads, which again takes away local control from the county, so we weren't very excited about that. And then lastly, there was also creation of a new program in the Senate bill to pay for the cost of interruptions to businesses impacted by highway construction projects. Again, I think that's something that business owners would welcome, but there were concerns on our end about having that come from the cost of a transportation project itself and raising the cost to do those. So we expect some of these to be back next year probably, so we'll keep working at them and hopefully can find a resolution that's, that works for all of us. Any questions there before I touch on bonding? And then yes, to Commissioner Senjem, the Capitol Investment Bill, which we weren't actually sure if there was gonna be one or not, since neither the House nor Senate passed one or even really presented one throughout the session. We didn't know until the special session came together that there would in fact be a bonding bill, and we were very happy to see that since there hadn't been one in two thousand and twenty-four. Senator Mark Johnson, the Senate Minority Lead, agreed to provide the votes, votes to get one off the Senate floor, and he also insisted that there be more money for infrastructure in that bill, which is a boon for us as that increased the amount available for transportation projects. So three programs that are very important to counties, including the local road improvement program, local bridge replacement, and then again, the wetland replacement program, all received funds, and these amounts were far in excess of what anybody had imagined as the two thousand and twenty-four bill, only had, I think, the wetland replacement program funding in it, none of the other programs. So this was a pretty big win in terms of getting those funds. Now, of course, it's, it's not much when you look at the overall need, but it still keeps things moving forward. So I will pause there unless there are any other questions. Great, I'll turn over my colleague Nancy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Nancy Seleski, and I represent MICA in the area of Public Health and Human Services, and it's great to be here today. We started our morning this morning in Blue Earth County, and we've been hanging out in Rochester all day, so we, we, we've been spending some money and having fun, so just wanted to tell you, yeah, it was great. In terms of the Health and Human Services priorities this year, all of the county organizations have the same three top priorities. The first one is one that you're very familiar with, and that is the SSIA, Systems Modernization. Dan Jensen from Olmsted has been very active in this, and I just want to call him out because he's been very much at the table on this. They ended up putting thirty-five million dollars in the Health and Human Services bill for that this year. There was an additional ten million dollars set aside last year, so with that, we are now able to draw down federal dollars, and hopefully we can be able to say goodbye to the green screen technology at some point, although some of the things I've been hearing of late is that it's a year to a year and a half away, so we're, we're still working on that. But the second item I want to mention is Min Choices, we had a reform bill that we brought forward this year. In terms of folks whose situations are not going to change from year to year, they have a disability that's not going to change, we only have to do the reassessment now every three years. Before, it was annually, and it's quite a difficult, long tool for both the client and county workers. The client can request an annual reassessment, a complete reassessment if they want, but for right now, we'll be doing that every three years. We also were given the authority to do additional remote reassessments, it was increased from two consecutive to four consecutive assessments. Verbal attestation is replacing the required reassessment signature for a service initiation. However, when the, when the completion has occurred, the assessor then does have to get a written attestation to get a signature from the client within thirty days at that point. They made some modifications as to the credentials or the qualifications for the assessors, one only has to have a two-year degree now to do that, so hopefully that will help in some of the backlog that we're all experiencing. And then DHS is required to create a dashboard on their website that will have information related to the assessment completions. The third item again has been around for a while, this deals with priority admissions and direct care and treatment. There was a review panel that was appointed a couple of years ago that made a number of recommendations to the legislature. Specifically, it was addressing the forty-eight hour rule where a person that's housed in a jail kind of was bumped to the top in terms of getting them into AMRTC. There was a two-year reprieve for that, that was about to end. The legislature did agree to extend that for another two years, and that was a recommendation from the review panel, but that was conditioned on there being additional capacity created for folks, you know, at AMRTC, within the state system. So I just want to mention that the Human Services Finance Bill does contain twenty million dollars for that expansion at AMRTC. There's an additional thirty-four million dollars for operating expenses starting in fiscal year twenty-nine, and we also were very pleased to see that the bonding bill passed because the additional fifty-five million dollars was contained within that bonding bill. So that seventy-five million dollars will create an additional fifty beds at AMRTC. In terms of other things that were included in that bill, the review panel will continue and has a report due in February of two thousand and twenty-six. One of the things that didn't happen that we were working on, I think you all are aware that for the last two years, counties have enjoyed a reprieve from the county cost share for those folks that have been deemed mentally ill and dangerous are waiting a bed in one state-operated facility going to another, so AMRTC to St. Peter is an example. We did have a two-year reprieve, like I mentioned, saving significant dollars over the last couple of years. Unfortunately, we will be picking that up starting July first of this, of this year, estimated to be about a fourteen million dollar cost to counties the first biennium and about eighteen in the second. And then the thing that also is lacking at this point is the need for community beds. We all know that there's a shortage for mental health beds, and we continue to, to talk about that a lot, everybody's, everybody's aware of that. The next item, I think you've got in your packet, the cost screen, or, I'm sorry, the cost shift document. I'll just mention that these were the proposals, starting with the House, Senate, Governor, and then the gold column on the right, I guess I can do this, I'm sorry, I was thinking this and yours. There we go. Then in the right was the Conference Committee Agreement at the end. And if you look down at the bottom figures, if you can see those, it's a little bit, bit small, you can see that there were significant cost shifts recommended by all parties. So we were on the defense mode rather quickly, and I want to thank all the county commissioners and county staff that reached out to their legislators, they were hearing from people daily. And in the end, I think we tempered those. They were hearing from people daily, and in the end, I think we tempered those cost shifts fairly significantly. I would just point out a couple of things in the gold column again. That second item where the negative number is eighty-nine million dollars of savings, that is something that the legislature created a work group, and it is charged with finding savings within the Health and Human Services system, and they're anticipating that they're going to, we're going to find ninety million. There are six county positions, two from MICA, two from AMC, and two from AXA, and we're in the process of kind of going through those, those appointments right now to make sure that we have the correct size of counties' geographical balance, et cetera, covered. So that is something that we'll be facing if they don't come up with that ninety million, but I did want to point that out. That second item of, of the eighteen million dollars on the right, again, that is relative to the, the cost share for MIND folks that we picked up again. The eighteen million dollars deals with a flat reimbursement proposal for long, for the MIND choices assessment. Currently, we're reimbursed under the Random Time Moment Study, and Senator Abler and others have said that there has to be a better way of doing that, and so the department is charged with trying to come up with a methodology by next year on what that might look like, and they're estimating the savings again of eighteen million dollars in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And then again, the totals there, those two numbers, the sixty-one million dollars versus the hundred and fifty-one, if we do not find that ninety million dollars in savings that the work group is charged with doing. I think, moving on here to...
Mr. Chair, Nancy, what if, what if we found fifty-nine million instead of eighty-nine? Does it still, is it just credited proportionally?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm assuming that they'll, they'll do that. Hopefully, we'll find a lot more. I don't know about that, but we'll be seeing more, I'm sure. The next item is the Health and Human Services Bill, and, I'm sorry, that, they had a negative target as well, but that wasn't as bad as the Human Services target. But again, the, the marquee piece of legislation in that was the SSIS Systems Modernization that I mentioned. They also put some money into EMS ambulance services. Finance, or the rural counties in particular have been in kind of a financial crisis for a while. They did put sixteen million dollars into an ambulance operating deficit grant program, two million dollars into training and staffing, and then they also created a pool for rural EMS uncompensated care. And that comes, some of the money comes from the general fund, and some of it comes from the healthcare access fund. So they did address that to a certain degree. Terms of public health, they did put two point six million dollars per biennium into the infectious disease prevention. Another item that we had last year, the legislature reduced grants to counties and tribes related to cannabis-related prevention, and they, the reduction last year was seven point two million dollars for the biennium. They did partially fill that this year with five million dollars for the biennium, so while we're not whole, there was progress made on, in that area. Other issues relative to the Department of Health, they did reduce funding for emergency preparedness, ended reduce funding for public health infrastructure pilot projects, and then there were a whole myriad of MDH fee increases. Other captured savings in the bill, the state is taking over the administration of non-emergency medical transportation. We have come full circle on that since I started my career with MICA, however many years ago that was. The state had it then. It was gifted to us in the middle of the night during a conference committee. Counties set up their own system, and now the state is taking it back again and says that they're going to find savings in it, so that's interesting to watch as well. Also, the public option language that was passed, that was repealed this year, and so they returned twenty-one million dollars to the healthcare access fund for that. And then the elimination of Minnesota Care for Undocumented Adults. In the first biennium, it's, it's savings of fifty-six point nine million and ninety-one million dollars in the tails. What didn't happen and what we're going to see, I think, emerging in next year, you're all hearing about it, is changes to the Minnesota African American Family Preservation Act. As you know, that, that act goes statewide on January first of 2027. Hennepin and Ramsey Counties currently are doing a pilot right now, and we are to learn from, from that experience. We did have conversations with some of the powers that be this session, saying, we're concerned that we're not going to be ready for this, and can we look at, you know, phasing us in or a possible delay? There was no appetite for that because there is a statewide work group that's working on this right now. They just got started in June, and they wanted to see what came out of that work group, and then if changes need to be made, we'll have next year to do that. The work group, there's four county members. In terms of MICA members, it's Otter Tail County Kurt Mortensen, Washington County Carla Bigum, and they join Hennepin County Angela Conley and Joan Lee from Polk County. They sit on that working group. They are to have an interim report to the legislature on January first of this next year. I've been watching and following this work group, and they're, you know, they're starting this, but they're, it's been, it's been slow. I think, you know, I think we're going to be looking at, needing an extension on this, but we'll see what that report looks at, like when it comes out. There was also language that showed up as an amendment this year, did not pass, but it would have prevented counties from contracting for case management services. That was obviously a big concern of ours. It was in response to a particular situation in Ramsey County that the legislator brought it. I think there'll be further discussion on that, but that's something that we obviously would be very much opposed to. And then the Senate Judiciary Chair did have a proposal that would have established a civil commitment coordinating division within the Office of the Attorney General, and that was opposed by, by several of the advocacy groups, NAMI, et cetera, because a lot of that work was being done by the department already, so they considered it to be, you know, parallel work or duplicative work, so that was pulled out of the, out of the omnibus bill. And finally, I would just mention that the provider tax remains at one point eight percent. There was a proposal to increase it to two percent, which is the max that, that it can be increased. That did not happen, so it remains at one point eight percent. And lastly, I just want to mention that I want to call out your staff, work very closely with a, a number of them, including Jen Berkwam, Amy Rockwater, Denise Daniels, I mentioned Dan Jensen, and also Amy Thompson, very much active in the MICA groups, and want to mention that they're not only helpful for, for your county, but for the county statewide, and thank you for allowing them to participate as much as they do.
Thank you. Any questions?
I forgot to do this. Sorry.
It's all right.
Ma'am, it's just chair. Everybody's doing good work. I just want to compliment Nancy on, on that chart that, you know, the big question coming out of session, what was the effect of the shifts? And it's like, everybody knows there were shifts, but nobody knows where the dollars were, what the categories were, and, and I don't know if you put that together yourself or not, but, but somebody did, and I'll give you credit.
Oh, thank you. It was a joint effort. We worked with the other associations as well. Thank you. Yeah, we needed to just get that, because it was changing constantly, and, yeah, we're happy with, with the end result.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ooh, other way. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Sosnochek. I am MICA's environmental liaison at the Capitol. Great to be here with you tonight. So first, before I dive into kind of how things played out with some of the specific bills that we're tracking for MICA's environment agenda, are, the issues that fall under that agenda touch a lot of different committee jurisdictions, and so we're watching bill hearings and, and conversations that play out in the Environment Committee, of course, but in the energy space, in agriculture, in the Legacy Committee, and so in taxes, right? And so there, there were kind of a lot of moving parts, and we try our best to kind of prioritize in terms of how we're spending our time, but want to make sure that we're giving at least kind of a high-level overview of, of what all is going on when it comes to our, our agenda. And so really, overall, I think the, kind of the full summary of the 2025 session, as you've heard from other folks who've already presented, is there just wasn't a lot of money to spend, and in some cases, committees were having pretty significant cut targets that they had to, to make work. And so when we think about MICA's environment agenda, a lot of my time, the vast majority of my time is spent talking to legislators about solid waste and the significant costs, your conversation just earlier tonight even, right? The, the significant costs that counties face when it comes to solid waste management and the investments that you all are making in some of those kind of emerging technologies or innovations and just trying to, to better manage waste more responsibly. And so when we think about just kind of the dynamics, the fiscal dynamics of the session this year, it's hard, it's hard to get resources to support that kind of work, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep at it, but that was really kind of overall how things played out. When, I would say the, the main exception to that was the Legacy Bill, and so not solid waste specific, but I know Olmsted County is, is very invested in clean water initiatives and addressing groundwater contamination in the Southeast region of Minnesota in general. And so a lot of that funding is available through the Clean Water Fund, and so there's over three hundred million dollars going out over the next two years in clean water funding. MICA has two of our, our board members actually who serve on the Clean Water Council, and we are really grateful to see that the, the final bill, the final version of the Clean Water Fund appropriations were exactly what the Clean Water Council had recommended. And so there's a lot of expertise that goes into making those recommendations. We know that that's a really important funding source, so that even when, you know, there's not a lot of resources in the general fund, at least we can rely on, on something like Clean Water Fund to support those activities. Nathan already mentioned the fifty percent reduction in aquatic invasive species county aid. I know that's not as much of a, of an issue here, but still, just want to, want to reiterate that, because I know that's still a loss of funding. Going back to solid waste, like I mentioned, a lot of my time is spent talking about that, and so one of the things that we look to when we don't have as many resources at the state level to invest and support this work is how can we reduce the amount of waste that's coming into the waste stream or reduce the cost that counties are facing by just better managing waste and being more responsible? And so in 2024, we worked with other county partners, other local government partners to advocate and pass the Packaging Waste and Cost Reduction Act. And so that is now in kind of the early stages of implementation. They've established an advisory board that's met a few times already this year, and so that's really targeting packaging and paper products and trying to bring the producers of those products come more into the fold and, and share some of the burden of, of the cost of managing that waste. And I know that's a place where I think, you know, when it comes to solid waste in generally, and especially issues like kind of product stewardship that are a little bit harder to understand, kind of what that benefit looks like when it's fully implemented, because it takes time for these things to actually play out. County perspectives, county voices, both county commissioners and, and staff are really critical and really valued by legislators. And so I can see, I think that is going to be a place where counties will continue to take the lead and be really influential. In this last session, we also worked on trying to expand a similar model around electronic waste and batteries, knowing that there are a lot of just safety risks when it comes to managing those products as they enter the waste stream, that are just really expensive, costly for you all to deal with. And we were not able to get that passed this year, but I think we'll, again, we'll continue to, to work on these issues as we, as we move forward. Data centers ended up being a pretty significant point of contention, which I don't know how many folks would have expected that a year ago, and, and that's not a place where MICA had an official position, but wanted to keep you all updated. You know, we tried our best to do that throughout session and are, are including it now because it did take up a lot of energy, no pun intended, from the session this year. A lot of time spent in committee and on the, on the Senate and House floors talking about data centers. And so I'll share a little bit about some of the kind of water use considerations that were included as part of that, that data centers bill that passed. And then finally, you know, resources to deal, to help mitigate the spread of Emerald Dash Four and deal with wood waste is fairly high on MICA's agenda, environment agenda. There's a lot of conversation, a lot of acknowledgement from legislators that this is a concern. I know it's, you know, kind of passed through southern Minnesota, so maybe more on the wood waste side for you all is, is more important, but with little, with few resources available, not a lot of action was ultimately taken on that issue this, this session. So now we'll get into just a breakdown from some of the different bills that we were tracking and some of the kind of most relevant items. I already mentioned the Legacy Bill and the Clean Water Funds included there. The Environment Bill, I mentioned, you know, Noel, the e-waste and battery product stewardship legislation was not ultimately included, but we were able to play pretty, really strong defense on protecting the Packaging Waste and Cost Reduction Act. You know, some industry groups are, are participating in kind of the advisory board and, and will ultimately be involved in the implementation process, but there are some folks who would like to see that repealed and, and see that go away. So a lot of education with legislators went into keeping that whole and not making any changes or ruling anything back there. There are a couple of different fee increases that'll send more money to state-level aquatic invasive species management activities and groundwater protection activities. There was an increase in the closed landfill investment fund spending, so prior to the passage of the Environment Bill this year, the state was only able to access four and a half million dollars each year to support those activities. Now it's up to six and a half million, and the statutory language also had to be extended. Commissioner Sanjam, I know that you have asked a lot about the shotgun, the repeal of the shotgun-only zone, and so that was ultimately included in the Environment Bill as well. There really wasn't actually a ton of policy that made it into that bill, but this was one of the, one of the items. But counties do, counties in the shotgun-only zone are able to pass their own county-specific ordinance on what can be used for deer hunting, and so that is an option that's available to you. The DNR is also required to, to make sure all counties who are affected are notified, so if they have not done that already, you should be seeing that communication soon enough. And so wanted to make sure that I mentioned that as part of this, part of this overview. In the Tax Committee, this is where the conversation around SCORE plays out. So the solid waste management tax revenue, there is twenty-seven percent of that that just gets put into the general fund and can be used for, for anything, and counties have long advocated that all of that tax revenue should actually be going back to the counties who are responsible for managing solid waste and meeting state-mandated recycling goals. And we've had really great, you know, there's been some good progress in 2023. We were able to get a little bit more of that money going back to counties, but we'll have to continue really pushing there. We had really great hearings in the House and Senate Tax Committees this year. Commissioner Russman actually came up and testified in the Senate hearing, and I know Senator Nelson was very excited to, to see her, and they took a photo, and it was great. And so this is really a place where there's bipartisan support. Our House SCORE bill had all thirty-five available author slots filled with members of both parties, members of the Environment Committee and the Tax Committee, but it's a place where the limited resources really make it hard to, to see a significant change, and so we'll continue that and hopefully can keep chipping away and getting more and more funding, because it's, you know, it's over thirty million dollars every year that counties are losing out on that we think we should have access to. So we'll keep that going. And then for data centers, so again, took up a lot of time and, and space in session, and so they ended up needing to pass just a standalone data centers bill. A lot of the provisions were related to tax issues, but they did include a couple things related to water usage, because a lot of these projects use significant amounts of water for cooling purposes, and so they have to include, you know, anyone applying for a permit. There's just evaluations of water usage. They have to ensure that public health is protected for the communities unlocated near these projects, and if there's concerns around impacts to the aquifer, then the applicant would have to pay to conduct that test and, and make sure there's not going to be any, any issues there. So that is it for me on environment, but happy to answer questions if, if anyone has them.
We're a quiet group today.
All right. Well, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. Just wanted to touch on public safety issues really briefly. Unlike a lot of other committees, public safety actually had a positive target, but most of that money went to state agencies to fill deficiency and operating adjustment requests. There was a three-year averaging implemented in the community supervision funding formula. That'll just allow for more stable and predictable funding of probation services from the state. And then the sentencing to serve funding sunset removes the state's twenty-five percent contribution to that program. Counties are still able to continue that if they so choose, but there's not going to be the state picking up twenty-five percent of the tab there. Did want to touch on earned sick and safe time and paid leave really quickly. We spent a lot of time working on these issues. Functionally, there was very little that happened at the end of the day. I would say the biggest thing on E S S T was that the notice requirement, if you're under prior law, you only need to provide official documentation if you're taking more than three consecutive days of E S S T. So under the new law, you need to provide documentation if you're taking more than two consecutive days of E S S T. We've been pursuing some broader changes, but, and they did pass the Senate, but got wrapped up in the House. On paid leave, we'd again been pursuing broader changes. The one, you know, I don't want to call it significant even shift was the premium rate cap reduction. So under previous law, the rate had been capped at one, a one point two percent maximum. They've moved that down to a one point one percent, but that's not going to impact your county budget, because right now, the rate's just at point eight eight, though theoretically it could increase in the future. There's also changes to open meeting law to allow broader use of it and remote participation for public officials and the eight P M. in-person absentee ballot drop-off deadline. And the 8:00 PM in-person absentee ballot drop-off deadline was moved back to 5:00 PM. But of course, people can still vote after 5:00 PM in person. Did want to talk about pensions a little bit. One of the most notable changes for counties came on the duty disability or PTSD changes. So basically, the usage of this, of people claiming PTSD and receiving these benefits and moving out of the workforce had increased significantly. And so basically, groups came together and said, okay, well, let's, rather than say, provide these benefits through age 65, for prospective cases, we'll allow them just for 60 months total, and they'll just kind of give us a chance, first of all, help the overall health of the pension fund, which the Police and Fire Pension Fund is the weakest of the major funds at the state level. And it'll give us a window, there's not effectively, nobody that was receiving benefits before will have that changed, and it'll just give us a window to figure out, is this working? Do we need to make other changes down the line? The other thing I want to talk about, probation officers, they brought forward a change to increase their pension benefit that would be funded through a higher employee contribution. That didn't move forward at the legislature, but the legislature does what it often does when something doesn't move forward and says, hey, let's have a work group over the summer. So we are participating in that this summer and fall. There'll probably be preliminary recommendations that come out by November, but the goal of para is to say, let's only bring forward something if we've got public employers and public employees kind of on the same page here. I would say that the 911 telecommunicators, they are part of that working group. They're asking for something different than the probation officers. They are asking for an increased employer contribution by a significant amount. Obviously, we're always going to be sensitive to that, because it impacts county budgets. And just the other thing about the pension bill this year, there was an increase through general fund dollars, the general police and fire pensions, as well as for teachers. So basically, where does that leave us at the end of the day with the budget picture, right? At the beginning of session, depending on how you count it, the temporary surplus was as low as $456 million, with a structural deficit as big as $6 billion. So what you can see here, this is end of session budget data that I've kind of tried to distill into one table, but it's data from MMB, which shows basically, okay, here's how much the state is taking in revenue, and here's how much the state is spending. And as you can see, still for fiscal years '26, '27, and '28, '29, the state is spending more than it is taking in revenue. That is, you know, a fundamental, like, budgetary issue. The good news is that after the 2025 legislative session, the money left on the bottom line is about $1.9 billion. So there is a bigger cushion than we had before. That's basically just rolling over from previous surpluses, but it's not going to help your structural issues. So these numbers are all going to change by early December, when the next economic forecast comes out from this state. But I think the likeliest outcome, and things can always change in between now and then, is that we're going to be talking about these in the same kind of way. We're going to have a temporary surplus for the 2026 legislative session and still have the structural deficit, but the structural deficit isn't going to appear as big as it did back in February. Now, this is all kind of complicated by the fact that in 2023, the legislature decided to include inflation in all of its budget forecasts. I've got that information up there, but this past year, basically, they decided not to spend any of that money, and as long as there's a structural deficit, I would assume they continue not to. But the other good thing in Minnesota's favor is that budget reserve. So I've got that number up there. It's about $3.2 billion. That's really, that's basically at 100% full health. So that's something that MMB is always really protective of, and it does give us a little bit of a cushion. The other note that I've got on there is just, if you compare where the U.S. economy is compared to the last time the economists came together in February to provide a forecast, we do have a little bit lower growth and higher inflation. But I would say that Minnesota's revenues have been pretty resilient. We came in $850 million above general fund revenue for fiscal '25, though that revenue month by month can go up and down. In July, it was $62 million down. So I mean, that's, you know, it moves around, but you'd rather be on the positive side than the negative side, for sure. Any questions about that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So there's a constitutional obligation to pass a balanced budget, and I'm trying to see a balanced budget in this chart.
Well, I would say that basically, the budget is balanced, because the states essentially, the surplus, it's balanced temporarily, is what I can tell you.
Is it balanced with the reserves?
No, not with reserves, because we've got that $1.9 billion cushion on the fourth row, essentially.
Okay. Oh, okay. The kind of forward, all right.
Yeah. And like, our budget wouldn't be on track to be balanced if there were no changes for the next biennium, but that's kind of a next biennial problem from the legislature's perspective.
Thank you.
Just a few other notes here. The passage of the OBBBA Act or HR1 is causing, I mean, you all know this, you all sent in a letter, it's causing significant uncertainty. We did have the state budget director present to our board last week, I believe, Commissioner Sanjam and Wright were there. She kind of broke down some of these numbers. They're starting to try to dive in more deeply. We should have more data soon, but we don't have all that yet. There's a lot more special elections than are typical, and there could be kind of a cascading effect of special elections if a representative becomes a senator. But I think most people are assuming that the current, or the composition of the legislature won't change fundamentally, that the incumbent parties in those districts will likely retain those seats, though, you know, I'm not an election specialist. And then, of course, the legislature returns on February 17th. The governor said that any special session before then is very unlikely. And then just wanted to wrap up, talking a little bit about our policy committee process. We have the commissioners set what our top priorities are. We had that meeting next week. They'll continue to be updated as we go along. Then we have the policy committee staff kind of work through the individual issues and the details of the phrasing on some of those kind of longstanding and any new priorities that counties may want to bring forward. So that process basically runs from August to December, and then the commissioners vote on the final product. And then I've just got our information up there, so you have it for your reference if you ever have questions or anything we can be helpful with.
Any questions? It's getting more quiet.
Hopefully, that's not a bad thing.
I hope not, too. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, just to comment, and I think Commissioner Wright as well, I mean, we serve on the MICA board, and it's pretty obvious, based on their presentations tonight, that this group really does their homework and does it pretty well and is very, very helpful. And I think in terms of passing on information to at least us, I'm not sure we do as well to pass it on to you, but nonetheless, they're an outstanding group. And Nathan, as a new executive director, is doing a fabulous job, I would say. Thank you.
He's responsible for the chart.
I like charts.
That's great. All right, thank you. All right, we're on to board and committee reports. We'll start with Greg.
Thank you. You know, today in the HHH Committee, we talked about aging in Olmsted County. And in case you're not aware of it, everybody's aging. And some groups, age groups, the group is aging faster than others. But I just wanted to point out that for the past two years, I have been involved with a group that's working at a state level to hopefully eventually get a state department level on healthy aging. And so the progress that has been made last year was is that it went through a committee study group. And that was in law by legislature to create that, and they were to have a report then at the end of the year. And the committee did finish its work, and we were very pleased that they did recommend that this go to the next level, which is then to have MMB supervise a planning group, all right? And they would hire somebody that would be in charge of that plan. And the plan would include all the things, and even more than what was reported in today's HHH committees, to look at all of the things that affect aging and how the state can create a plan that would improve those situations for the aging and get us prepared for what's coming, even though we're 10 years behind in that preparation. So I'll report on the progress of that again, of how that group is coming and how, who's going to be appointed to lead that study group and how they're going to proceed. So I am pleased, first of all, that Olmsted County is one of the lead counties in the state of Minnesota looking at aging, but I'm also pleased that the state legislature is willing to look at a plan, how to create a better plan for our aging population. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Laurel?
Yeah, I have one committee report. I attended the Public Health Services Advisory Board meeting, and that is our one remaining advisory board. So I take that as a charge to be very observant and to reflect back to my colleagues the kinds of conversations that we have and especially the tone and the direction of those conversations. So at our last meeting, Jennifer Berquam gave us a legislative update, particularly with regard to public health. So as we know, it's no surprise to us that the federal and state budgets handed down to counties are just generally bad news for counties. It puts a lot of strain and stress on our budgets and on our ability to deliver programs and services, most of which were mandated to do so by the state. It turned out that the legislative changes at the state level weren't as severe as anticipated, and there was some good news coming down from the state level. But I would be remiss if I didn't reflect back to this group, the conversation that the Public Health Services Advisory Board members had about the federal changes in particular. So just know that this is a board made up of our community's most passionate experts and dedicated professionals working in public health in some capacity. And they characterize these federal changes, especially with regard to the Medicaid eligibility changes and the SNAP changes, as devastating and catastrophic. I found these were just very strong words, worth repeating. And many of these board members expressed that they foresee struggle and suffering as a result of these changes amongst the populations that they serve. And in particular, the changes to, the reductions of grant, grant and research funding is just devastating to a number of people on that board. And the staffing reductions at HHAs, the CDC, FDA, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, and the USDA, these will create a cascade effect that will just put a great deal of strain and stress on their agencies and their ability to perform their work and to provide the care that they're dedicated to. And I wanted to reflect the candor and sincerity of the conversation that we had last week.
Thank you. Dave?
I don't think I have anything. I'll pass.
Okay. Bob?
Nothing to report.
Ryan? Okay. I got a couple of things, and then I'll make a short quote. One, for the public that's speaking to us, I think we're out of this room now for the next two months, so if you're going to come to us next month, we're at the campus. It's 2100 Building. There we go. We like to call it the Public Health Building, a few of us, but it's the 2100 Building down at the campus. You're welcome to come, same Tuesday schedule. Public Health. Two, I'd like to just reflect a little bit. We had a meeting last week that was scheduled with Congressman Finstad for the, for board members to have a discussion with congressmen about issues that were important to our residents and to the board itself. And I just, it was ended early, because there were some people there, not all people, but some people there that didn't want that conversation to happen. And I just want to reflect that I don't think it's better to have a one-way conversation where we're yelling at each other than to have no conversation. And we need to figure out as a society how we have respectful and true discussions with each other if we want to move forward. So hopefully that we get better behavior out of everybody in the future, and we can move this country forward and come to some understanding of each other and our different perspectives on issues. All right. Last short quote, and it's again from Shel Silverstein, who's coming to favor it of mine for quotes now. If you're a bird, be an early bird, but if you're a worm, sleep late. I'll entertain emotion to adjourn.
On that, and we'll do adjourned.
We're adjourned.